Good morning. It's 9:30 a.m., Tuesday, September 27th. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us still our wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. And we've got minutes from September 20th.
I'm in motion to approve.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Next, any public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. County Engineers Office, Dan Becker.
Morning.
Good morning, Dan.
I have one resolution for your consideration. The resolution is establishing load limits on the Wall Road Bridge Number Three down in Wadsworth Township and in our weekly permits.
Make motion to approve?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
No road closures this week?
No, we're bored.
I'm disappointed.
Sorry.
I'm sure we'll find ODOT has done their shares.
And we had nothing to do with Miles Garrett's crash.
Yeah, okay.
I know.
All right, very good.
Nothing to do with it. It was a state ride.
Sad to see a nice Porsche messed up that badly, so anyway.
I hope he's okay.
Yeah, it sounds like he is. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Very good, thank you. Sanitary Engineer, Jeremy Senkow.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Jeremy.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is rescinding a previous resolution authorizing the sanitary engineer to purchase a four-wheel-drive pickup truck and authorizing the sanitary engineer to purchase a four-wheel-drive pickup truck through Sourcewell. And the second is accepting an awarding bid for the Spieth Road Pump Station Generator Improvement Project.
Make motion to approve the two resolutions?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thank you. Our Human Resources Director, Holly Muren.
Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in sanitary, one at Job and Family Services, a promotion at County Home, six rate increases, two in maintenance, one in sanitary, one in human resources, and two in Job and Family Services, a fund change in transit, two leave of absence, one in animal shelter, and one at Job and Family Services, a return from leave at Job and Family Services, three resignations, one in Job and Family Services, one at Solid Waste, and one at Office for Overdose.
Make motion to approve?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Economic Development Corporation, Bethany Dentler. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here today with a resolution regarding the building demolition grants that was approved for the Medina County Port Authority. They are finalizing their cure process for the applications, and there were three projects located in townships in the county that need a community authorization form, basically the commissioner's certification that they are blighted and need to be torn down with the owner's permission. And all of these do have the owner's permission. And all of them are blighted, so I just need to get the paperwork approved so that I can finish up the grant application process.
Make motion to approve?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Just want to thank you for your work on these. This is obviously a considerable improvement once they are demolished.
Yes, indeed. I was just curious about the title here. Is that the lead entity or the led entity? Because if it was a led entity, it would seem very appropriate for the topic.
Lead entity.
Lead entity.
All right. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
And just one other quick update about this program. We had been approved for the $500,000, which all the counties in the state were authorized for as long as they followed all the processes. But there were also two additional applications in Medina County, which are not under the commissioner's purview, but they were about total of $600,000. And the state is also moving them through the process. So there's a couple of things they need to cure with those. But if I can get everything done, then we might even be getting more money in the county.
So maybe 1.1 million instead of the 500?
Potentially. If I can get all the paperwork from the property owners, yes.
Good deal. Very good. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. All right. Our Assistant County Administrator, Amy Lang Galvin. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have 10 resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2022 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Fourth is revenue adjustments for various funds. Fifth is cash transfers for various funds. Sixth is the sales tax distribution to the various districts located in Medina County. The seventh is awarding the purchase of 7,000 gallons of regular unleaded gas for the engineering center to Port's petroleum at $2.67 per gallon. The eighth is approving a contractual engagement with the Auditor of State Local Government Services Division for assistance in the preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, for Medina County. The ninth is allowing expenses of county officials. And the 10th is approving claims for the week in the amount of $3,267,574.47.
Make motion to approve the 10 resolutions?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you so much. Scott Miller, County Administrator. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning, Scott.
I have three resolutions for you today. The first resolution is approving the purchase of the Civil Service and Public Sales Access Software from Tyler Technologies through Sourcewell for the sheriff's office. As you know, the current civil package is the end of life and will be unsupported, and they needed to go with a new package. The second resolution is... Second resolution is authorizing the execution of a discount pricing agreement with NG. This is for electrical service supply for county buildings. It also gives me the ability to amend the contract if necessary if we're able to move some of the county buildings onto the aggregation program at the lower rate. And the final resolution is authorizing a mutual termination agreement with AEP Energy. This resolution, the county buildings are currently at about 3.7 cents. The contract ends in December. AEP has seen an arbitrage possibility where they can sell the electric for probably 10, 11 cents kilowatt hour. So they would like to terminate the agreement, and in return for terminating the agreement, they would pay us approximately $106,000. That gives us the money necessary. We would go to the price to compare, which is about 5.5, 5.7 cents per kilowatt hour. About $68,000 would cover that difference. So we would still basically be getting... I mean, we're still... We're not out any money, and it would give us an additional approximate $47,000. So I'd like to go ahead and terminate the agreement and...
Go on the price to compare.
Yeah.
Yep.
Make motion to approve the three resolutions?
Second.
Moved and discussion. I say moved and second. Any discussion? Sorry. Yeah, I know. Jumping ahead here.
Scott, I'm the sheriff's software. If I remember right, that was like, what, $250,000?
It's $100,000.
Okay, and he had grant money to pay for that, did he not?
No. We had set money aside to do a tower in Seville.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
Yeah, we had set money aside to do a tower in Seville, and he would like to forego that project, push that off to a later date, and use that money for this purpose.
For this service, right, okay.
All right, and thanks for your work on the... Obviously, with the electric and with the volatility that's going on in the market and the uncertainty, and being able to negotiate, I guess, the best we can given what's the unexpected increases.
Hey for half the sheriff's software, right there.
We did.
There you go.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, all right. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Department Updates, Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director.
Morning, how are you?
Good morning.
So our August update, going through the report, our ridership has remained pretty steady on the fixed drought deviation side. Our demand service is really increasing quite a bit. Our strategic planning efforts are looking at that very closely to make sure that we can meet the need, the rising need of more demand services countywide. More folks in the underserved areas are asking for service along with the consolidation of the cities. As you can see, our costs are going up. We're using more fuel. Cost per mile continues to rise. We're keeping it down by making sure that we manage it correctly and schedule correctly. But when you start looking at cost per passenger, you can see that things are going up a little bit. Our fuel costs have leveled off, but we're planning on it for next year to hopefully not go too much higher. When we look at our Easy Fair service, you know, we're continuing to make sure that we offer that to our customers as an electronic cashless fare payment system. It's getting popular. It's a little slower than I like it, but, you know, we get 14%, 18% of our total sales through the Easy Fair. Like it to see 50% as we move forward with some marketing with strategic planning.
Shannon, you have a question?
Sure, no, please.
So to that point, do most of your customers have cell phones and the electronic requirements on their end to be able to adopt the Easy Fair?
I would say that about 50% of our customers have, on average. That's pretty much a state. But I'd say about 50, maybe 60% have the ability to use it. I'm not sure if they're using it.
Right.
But a mobile... Most folks have a phone. Their providers are providing more updated phones, so it's happening just because of that. But I'm not sure if they're all aware that they can use it. I think that's the marketing opportunity.
Okay.
Yeah. As we look in our services for the contract, Job and Family has continued to... There's more of a demand. We had three buses a couple of years ago that we provide service to out of county. It's up to five. And they're asking for more mobility device-equipped vehicles, which we're working with our partners. We're going to have an RFP coming out soon because we're going to have to update that contract. Talking with Debbie a little bit from Job and Family is about making sure that we're leveraging technology with them as well in the new contract. Going into what we've been doing with strategic planning... But I'll pause on that for a second. We did make an offer in... We just hired... Recently hired a new road supervisor, Amy Carpenter. She's going to be joining us next Monday. Very happy to have her. She has a lot of experience. She's going to bring a lot of energy to our team. You need that energy to run public transit. And I'll also mention, thank you for support on quickly being able to obtain the three vehicles. The purchase order should go out tomorrow. So we're really excited about getting those. Talking with Amy a little bit about the cost that it would have been to fix the three existing units we have. It needs a lot of work, structural work. Not to say that we couldn't do it, but this is a much better option if we write the grants and be able to leverage the capital money to do this. So it's going to be really advantageous. And the other, I guess, the ancillary is thinking about what these vehicles look like for the future for us, right? Are they doable? Are they... I think we're really going to like them. I really do. So on October 15th, we have an employee... It's our annual safety and training day. We're going to try to get a vehicle there for our employees to see and also engage them in the strategic planning process. That's going to be another thing we do. Make sure they understand what we're doing, get a lot of information you've gotten, a lot of the data. They know it best, right? They're out there doing it.
Great.
Going back to the strategic planning, I wanted to make sure that... We talked about the exercises that we did. Thank you again very much. We had a lot of participation. I think there was a lot of the same ideas, but some new ideas. I just want to mention that the exercises were very interactive from a point of determining... And this was the things, the key things we talked about. Should there be more service or more frequent service? Or should we concentrate in the specific city areas? Or we should be more countywide? And a lot of the things that they're producing, our partners from OHM have been able to help us with. So you all see a lot of the results. It's a question I ask myself every day. Should we run later? Should we have more Saturday service? The things that we're trying to figure out and use our resources to the best of our ability with the funds we have is going to be very important. There is a need out there, a growing need in the community. We're seeing it right now. There's more demand service than ever being asked for, especially at our busiest days and our busiest times, our peak times. It's really... We had... You'll see on the report, we had 42 denials last in August, way too many for me. But that's something we had to not be able to provide. So, you know, you can look at it in the way that we have an opportunity. I just don't want to leave anybody. Our team does a really good job. I credit them for making sure that they find a way to negotiate trips and find a way to get everybody where they're going. But it's a real challenge right now. Sometimes we have to say, "We can't help you today," and that's not good for me.
Right. So Shannon, with that, to that point, you want to move to more full-time drivers, correct?
One of the things we've been talking about to attract new employees is to offer full time because we've had some folks come in and ask, "This is a full-time position." That prompted it. And then we started talking about stabilizing our workforce to make sure we have enough four and five days a week because we're running six days, and our part-timers are working two to three. There was a point where some part-timers were working a little bit more. We've had to really scale that back and make sure that we're paying attention to our overtime and making sure we're equally distributing it out. But, yeah, the full time would help us, you know. We run 11 demand buses a day and seven fixed droughts. We have 12 full timers. And vacations and everything that happens there and people being out.
And with the demand and on-demand service, you need more people, right?
We do, and we do need to make sure that we have enough on the given day that Mondays and Fridays happen, yes. Those are key times. But, yeah, we're really looking for that stability in our workforce and also making sure that we can provide solid service on Saturdays. There's an opportunity on Saturdays. We began to talk about strategic planning. I think if more folks knew about it and we had a more seamless, accessible service, I think we would get a lot of folks interested in it, at least looking at it and trying it, yeah.
Right.
Very good.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Kiley, Job and Family Services Director.
Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning. Just one resolution for your consideration this morning. It's an agreement with Tri-County Jobs for Ohio Graduates and Job Development Services for JFS.
I make motion to approve?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
All right.
Department Updates?
Yep.
I'll do child support and public assistance kind of altogether. It's pretty quiet in that those two respective divisions, both divisions are continuing their work for supportive services within the county. Their caseloads remain pretty constant with my prior month's reporting. We're collecting about over $1 million in support payments and servicing over 27,000 residents on various public assistance programs. The Public Assistance Division was awarded some dollars as an achievement towards the state's SNAP timeliness rate. The state's rate is 95%. And Medina County and that division has consistently been at 90% or higher for our approving of SNAP cases. There are many times that they are at 100%. So applications that are nearing 30 days, they have to be approved by that 30th day. There are times where the division's doing it 100% of the time. So I couldn't be more proud of the work that they're doing. The Child Protective Division, sadly, we have 149 children in care. Last week, we took in 11 children in one week alone. Needless to say, these are unprecedented numbers for Medina County. I pulled statistics back to 2018, and I can't even find numbers that rival that. The division currently has three vacancies for child protective workers and then two more for case aids to support those individuals that are out in the field. Those case aids positions are vital because if you're... Even if you aren't in the want for protective work, you can still provide those supportive services to those that are out in the field. You can do some visits, some communications with clients and families, but you can also help with a lot of the clerical duties that are responsibilities of those that are out in the field. So all of those positions are available on our website at mcjfs.us, and I believe Holly has them on the county resource page, so those are available. So sadly, but sweet. Questions for me?
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Very good.
I do have one other thing.
Sure, yes.
This is not a question. This is a graduation. So the Department of Job and Family... Ohio Department of Job and Family Services just completed their audit in a whole list of different areas, and it was a very clean audit. There was not a single recommendation. There's no management letter. It was a great job, so you're doing a good job out there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Commissioners, we do have a resolution reappointing members to the Medina County Home Advisory Council. There's a term for three members, expired on August 19, 2022. Vowing members have expressed a desire to continue to serve as representatives and the commissioners wish to continue there. Nancy Pitts, representing the Medina County Metropolitan Housing Authority; Tom Assas, representing the general public; and Mary Vance, representing senior citizens. And for their terms will expire August 19, 2025. And we thank them for their service and appreciate that they're willing to continue.
Make motion to approve?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next, open to public comment. Okay, being none, we'll go ahead and proceed to discussion session. Today, we'll first start off with the Board of Elections. I understand you have a request before us regarding your electronic poll book purchases. Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind.
So I'll be brief, knowing that you probably have a lot of questions. But we are here to request funding to replace the board's electronic poll books. As you know, the current e-poll books are at the end of their lifespan, and the Secretary of State is directing boards to replace outdated equipment for security reasons. So as soon as their systems were certified by the Secretary of State, we invited three vendors for demos at the board, ESNS, who's our current vendor, No Inc., and 10x. After assessing the hardware and software along with such items as vendor support, costs, security, management tools, future development, as well as storage capability in our warehouse, No Inc. is our choice. They are a leading company that concentrates exclusively on electronic poll books and modules that maximize their use. And their poll books are in use now in more than half of the counties in Ohio. And several of their leadership and support team are former Ohio elections officials, which we think is an advantage. So the quote is for a poll book package with modalities that will provide more effective and accurate, real-time tracking and reporting capabilities. These tools were not available when poll books were first introduced over 15 years ago. The quote is higher than our ballpark estimates because No Inc. usually writes three-year contracts. So this quote does contain year-two and year-three maintenance costs that can be paid upfront. So you've all been provided with a packet that includes all of the... Some additional information as well as the actual quotes in detail. And I think I'm sure that the staff would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I'm sure you have some.
For the benefit of the folks that are watching, could you describe what an e-poll book is and what its function is?
So the electronic poll books are... When you go in to vote and you approach the poll workers, they have an electronic device on which you are... You provide your license, and they are able to see that you're a registered voter. they are able to see that you're a registered voter and then from that determine exactly which ballot you should have so that you can then go vote at the voting machine. And this replaces the very cumbersome paper poll books that we had been using up until 15 years ago, where we would have every single voter listed in those books. These are tied to our voter registration system, so everything is updated immediately and they just are a huge time saver and as well as more accurate than using the paper poll books.
So this equipment is used basically when a person comes in to vote to validate that they are a registered voter?
Correct.
And what precinct they're from and what ballot they get?
Yes.
It's not used to actually vote?
No, not at all. Yeah, and it's not connected to the internet in any way.
Right.
Yes.
So basically, all the poll books have to be updated before they are taken out to the polling stations, correct?
Yeah, there is a rigorous system of, we call it LNA testing, of testing that goes on before they're utilized and they're updated for every single election and they're updated as soon as they have been tested. And so they're, they don't just get, you know, thrown into the warehouse in between elections, they're constantly updated, yes.
But I guess what my question comes down to, before they go out to the polling stations and of course you have a voting that is accomplished the day before, they have to all be updated during that period of time, correct?
Yeah, at the end of, yeah.
So you know whether?
Right, because we're voting on Monday and then, and so they have to be updated on, based on what, both absentee ballots as well as any voting that occurred that last day before. So there is a process that updates those machines that morning at the polls. And the, some of the, I think Brian and Heather can talk to this better than I, but some of the, part of the software package in this new system will make that more seamless and easier.
Since that time, they're compressed.
Very much so.
And so that helps, helps?
Yeah.
Or reduce, obviously, the, how cumbersome it was before that.
Right, yeah.
Okay, understand. Now, what's the use of the printers? Could you explain, because that was a separate bid and a separate item?
Yes. Why don't you, I'll let either John or, John, do you wanna come up here maybe?
Yeah, I can. Okay.
And you are?
Jonathan Hayes. I'm the assistant administrator there.
Thank you.
The ESNS printers, a separate?
Oh.
Yeah, that was a separate request.
Yeah, so that is, just to accommodate the growing of the county. We're having more precincts.
No, I think he's talking about the.
ESNS printers, you've requested 58,800 for the Express Vote printers?
Those are the ballot printers for?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I do believe that is correct, Heather.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I hit the wrong person.
All right, sorry.
That's all right.
My apologies. Okay, I should've been clearer.
That would be me. So the.
And you are?
I'm Heather, the director. So the printers you're referring to are the, they're connected to the e-poll book and they actually print a barcode on the ballot activation card, which is the ballot that goes into the voting machine. It tells the voting machine what ballot to bring up for the voter.
Got it.
It doesn't identify the voter in any way. It just tells the machine what ballot to bring up, so what the voter's eligible to vote on. So each polling location, you can go to any line, any time, and there's typically multiple precincts and precinct splits in a polling location. So it's making sure the voter can vote on the right issues and candidates.
So from a process standpoint, a voter comes in, they go through the e-poll book process, the printer prints out their ballot, they take it, stick it in the voting machine, they go through and vote, it prints it off on that ballot, and then they take the ballot out of the machine and put it into the bin, for lack of a better word.
For scanner.
Scanner, thank you.
Correct.
Right, so that's the process, right?
Yes.
Okay, so these two pieces of equipment are the two front-end pieces of the voting process?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
And regardless of what e-poll system we were to purchase, we still would need to do that printer purchase because we need those for the, for the voting machines.
Right.
Correct, got it, okay, all right.
So Pam, a couple more questions.
Stay here.
So.
That's right, thank you.
Yeah, Heather, you can stay here. So our current e-poll book system that we have in place is at end of life, right?
Yes, yes.
And can we say that it's going to fall out of support soon?
Yes, yes.
I don't wanna, I don't say anything we're not supposed to from a cybersecurity standpoint, disclose, but, but they are going out of support in the next year or so.
January, January.
Right? And so we have to take action to replace them.
Correct.
It's just a matter of what system?
Correct.
Do you all think is the best to do that? Correct?
But we're okay for November 8.
Well, yeah, yeah.
This is the last election.
This will be the last, yeah.
Election, and we can use that.
Right.
Okay, and then?
I was gonna say, the rates you're quoting right now are good for 30 days, as I understand. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yes.
The proposal, so we need to take action, or you've taken action, we need to authorize that those funds are there for that action to be valid.
Correct.
Next 30 days, when would these be delivered and when would they ended up being utilized?
We're looking, we're hoping for an early, well, either end of the year or early January delivery and they would be utilized in the May election.
May primary, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Got it.
Two more questions. The Secretary of State and/or state legislature is considering legislation to partially fund this.
Yes.
But we don't know to what degree, right?
Correct, yeah.
And also, from what I understand, at least from what I'm hearing, is that if we do take action and fund this, the legislature may retroactively reimburse us for whatever percentage of the cost that the state.
That's actually part of legislative agenda for CCIO when we had our meeting two weeks ago. This is one of those items that indeed it's embedded in there now. Hopefully they can get it during lame duck. There's a bill, actually Sharon Ray has one that potentially could get added. And hopefully that's what the big push, not only from our association, but all, obviously the Ohio Elections Association, they're also pushing to have this funded. They would be retroactive to anybody that had purchased this year, is my understanding.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, and I think when, when they did this previously, I believe it was an 80/20, but I don't think it's going to be that good of a split this time, so.
Well, they're sitting on, I guess our argument is we want 100%.
Exactly.
That's what we're arguing for. They are sitting on a lot of money. The state has a pretty significant, a very healthy balance. The economy's been good, sales, tax, and everything's rising up pretty well. And so the argument to this point, I think all forces that are involved in this are pushing for 100%.
Definitely.
And that's what we'll hope for, maybe it'd be a nice Christmas present.
Yes.
If not, we'll have to try to include it in the budget next year. So that's, it's part of our legislative agendas as part of the CCIO.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're hopeful that we'll have by the end of the year that great news.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think I said this before, but I should point out that there are year two and year three costs in this.
Right.
Which makes it look higher than what we had talked about before. And I don't know how you approach that. This is the way No Inc. writes their contracts, so there could always be changes if we decided to do it differently.
Do you know relatively or approximately how much is the year two and year three?
Are there?
What's that?
Was that for the software support?
Each year? Yeah.
Or was that more for like maintenance?
It's maintenance.
The iPads?
It's maintenance?
Pretty much, it's an iPad-based system.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
So at least $35,000, $70,000, but I think it's higher than that actually, maybe up to, because there's something in the earlier part too that was.
So this would need to be included, obviously, in next year's budget.
If it's not done as a, as a paid up.
Full pay upfront.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And this includes 250?
Yes.
Units?
Yes.
Yes.
And so does that number, obviously includes all precincts?
Yes.
Yes.
For two at each precinct? Or two, or at least two, I guess, minimum, right?
For each precinct and then?
There are other precincts that have more locations, so they need more, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
So we're looking.
And it did break down the quantity on the last page.
Yeah, I saw that, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, there we are, okay.
So I guess, quick question, should the, we know that there's disagreement over maps and should there be changes and that will affect potentially the number of machines needed and as well as the number of precincts?
No, because we're taking that into account. We know we're gonna have more precincts. We don't know what the precinct lines are going to be.
And you put 12 spare in there, I saw, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So we have, what, like a two, almost 200 of them currently in our current?
We have 170, yeah, 170.
Sorry, 170?
Yeah.
And we do not have enough right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, answers my questions? Any more? All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Do we need to take action or do we?
We've been, well, they're asking at this, I guess we.
We can put this on resolution next week?
Yeah, okay. At this point, we need to identify the funding source. I know the request was for ARPA. I guess which bucket would this, so to speak, qualify to be under, and if not, then which portion we'll have to take under our general fund portion of it. So Amy, that's Amy's job to determine where, I guess, and just to work through that issue. But the timeline would be probably earliest next week or the week after.
So from your standpoint, Board of Elections standpoint, sooner is better than later, I would take it.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
So within the next two weeks is good? Is that next week the budget is okay?
Okay. Well, given, like the time from when the bids were doing, you've got 30, that period of time for it, good, we've got that period, but let's shoot for, yeah, next week or two. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay. Let's see, discussion session, Jeremy.
What?
Shagger, right?
Okay.
Man, we're disappointed.
You're our good luck charm, the Board of Elections here. You kept him quiet. Scott, you have anything? Oh my gosh. Amy? You've gotta have something.
I do.
Okay.
So just a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank all the departments for getting their budget requests in. And a reminder to you all that budget hearings begin next Monday. I think we're scheduled to start at 10:30 Monday. And also to let you know, the directors meeting on Monday, we revisited the latest version of the tuition assistance policy based on the feedback from you three and then from the department directors and from Scott. We added trade schools and certificate programs. So I believe we have support from all the department directors to go ahead and approve this. I have just a couple of forms that need to be completed that would accompany the policy. I'll provide it to you one more time, but we would hope that we can present that soon and get that approved and in action with staff members looking to take advantage of[1649.83]